Uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think more. It has. Oh.
Around somebody like once they did the school later. They are.
That was.
He's like, no, I'm good. Keep your blue. Artsy. That. That.
Yeah.
I didn't even know we could text it and take care of the baby.
All right. Because they come from a man on.
Uh. Oh. Oh.
Take it in. I don't. You're still. I don't. Yeah, they just have. The, the, the dog in the back.
Well, they got, they got them all.
Now, the captain jumped all around. Thanks. She still helps Nathan. She can't jump as much. She's like scooching her. She's like, she's like back literally.
Or give me one of those.
Happy Monday, Jordan.
Hey, happy Monday.
How are you doing?
It's.
Or should I say happy blinking day, you know?
Yeah, the cat. She goes up the old tower.
Oh.
You know, spring in your snuff. We said. About the fact that we have many fancy chairs and that room right there that we can rotate the chair.
Oh, we've got the new chairs all. Yeah, actually, that's all right. It's.
Yeah.
It's some. It actually probably makes it easier to sit.
To move.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
My dogs don't play with toys. Is Melody's?
Uh, she is Melody traveling.
I haven't heard.
Wasn't going to be here.
I have not heard anything.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call the February twelfth, twenty twenty four Dayton Town Council meeting to order at six o'clock. There's a sign up sheet over the front door for anybody who'd like to speak tonight during our public comments section. They'll be limited to five minutes. Could we have roll call, please?
Ms. Mathias.
Present.
Ms. Pennell. Mr. Dyjack.
Present.
Mr. Walls. Ms. Estes. Mayor Jackson.
Present.
Mr. Seward.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Wade. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet tonight to discuss the town's business. We ask that you watch over our first responders and men and women of the military to protect us across this great country. We ask that you reach out and comfort those that are in ill health or despair. We pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes for the January eighth, twenty twenty four Regret Town Council meeting as presented. Thank you, Bob. Do I have a second? Thank you, Rob. All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We have several action items this evening. First action item is a resolution of governing body for the USDA Community Facilities Grant. The resolution of governing body is required to apply for the USDA Community Facilities Grant by adopting the resolution. The town is saying that we will abide by all agreements, documents, and forms when approved for funding. Can we have a staff report, Chief Trout?
USDA's resolution over. And that's part of the green package. It has to be completely precise.
Thanks, sir. So I need a motion to adopt the USDA Resolution of Governing Body for the purchase of a police vehicle.
So moved.
Thank you, Bradford, Mr. Dyjack.
That's good.
Boy, that was quick. Is there any discussion on this matter? Ms. Wade, maybe we have a roll call.
Yes. Ms. Pennell. Mr. Seward.
Aye.
Ms. Mathias.
Aye.
Ms. Estes. Mr. Walls. Mr. Dyjack.
Aye.
Mayor Jackson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Two down and three to go. Next action item is the consideration of award for consultant services for the downtown revitalization grant. Um, this has been going on for a long time, so I'm sure Ms. Roche would love to give us a staff report on that.
Yes. Um, so the town received four responses to the RFP for the creation of a downtown master plan. Each proposal was independently evaluated and scored by staff. Pond, uh, company, sorry, Pond Consulting Company had the highest score unanimously by staff. The proposal was presented to the project management team, which accepted staff's recommendation to go with Pond. Um, staff also checked Pond's references and was able to speak with three localities who have previously worked with Pond. All three had very positive reviews and indicated that Pond was able to effectively incorporate local input, meet deadlines, and develop realistic projects. So we were very happy with all of the proposals received, but especially Pond's. Um, so it is staff's recommendation to award, um, the contract to Pond.
Thank you, Ms. Roche. So I need a motion to approve the award Pond and the company, the contract for the downtown revitalization grant not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. What's that? Bob. I know it's came from that way. Thank you. Uh, do we have any discussion on that? All favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Oh, thank you. Skipped over my own agenda here. So we're going to go back to item B, which is the consideration of a compensation study to ensure the town maintains competitive edge. Um, it is a very difficult climate out there for hiring. Um, we want to make sure that the staff members that we have, um, are compensated, uh, as they should be. So we've talked about a compensation study for really several years now. We've done, um, where we've reached out to other municipalities to see what they're paying their different people, but we've really never gone into an in-depth comp- compensation study. So that's what this is about. Um, would you like to give us a staff report on that, Mr. Born?
Sure. That. There. Uh, yeah, this is, this is bringing in a company that will look at all of our job descriptions, the, the grade scales. It will do a complete study of, of the compensation package that we provide for employees. Uh. The last town, um, study was done in twenty eighteen, so this one needs to be revised. Typically, they're done every couple of years, if not every year, in depending on the market. Uh, so staff and personnel committee recommend that we authorize the Berkeley Group to conduct the compensation study for the town of Dayton having cost not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars.
So I need a motion to approve the Berkeley Group to complete the compensation study with the total not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Thank you.
I second.
Well, you're just right on top of this, Ted. Thank you, sir. Bob got a second? Do we have any further discussion on this? Roll call, please, Ms. Wade?
Mr. Dyjack?
Aye.
Mr. Walls? Ms. Mathias?
Aye.
Ms. Estes?
Go abstain because, um, I didn't have this information until this now, so I'll pass on this. So I won't care for.
Mr. Seward?
Aye.
Mayor Jackson?
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
All right, this next action item is the consideration of adding an additional public service, um, public works, um, employee. And this is, position is already in our organization chart. Um, it is, it was not funded last year with the, um, we've had our public works supervisor left to go to another municipality. Uh, our water treatment plant operator has graciously agreed to step into that position, so thank you. Um, we have hired one employee already. That employee has basically taken the spot of what Adam Meek's position was, not that title, but that spot a- as far as the number count. So this that we're talking about now is for an employee who is already in our organizational chart. It's just, it was not funded in the last budget. Do you want to give a staff report on that, or did I do that good enough way?
No, that's fine. You're good. That's great. It's, it's just kind of backfilling the position that Adam left. Jennifer is holding two positions, water and public works. So this is backfilling with the position of. That's all.
Thanks, sir. So I need a motion to approve the hiring of an additional staff member who is on the organizational chart but was unfunded.
So moved.
Thank you, Bradford. Ms. Estes, second. Do we have any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. The next action item this evening is the consideration of the implementation and revision of several personnel policies. Uh, can we have a staff report on this?
Sure. Uh, and I'll, I'll go through this and I'll defer to Chris Stone on some of this that we tagged in on this one. Um, we are looking at revising several personnel policies, uh, one being the snow removal policy. Um, this kind of sets some standards for certain people and the, the overtime that might be required for that. Uh, it sets, um, hours they can work mandated breaks, uh, kind of how when they're called, the notification process. It just sets things, um, the expectations or here and writing for employees so that they're fair across the board and we don't waiver on that policy. Uh, the next one is the com- compensatory time policy. Uh, previously, Virginia did not allow comp time. However, the laws have changed. Um, this is a policy that, uh, you know, you worked forty hours, anything over forty, you have an option of taking as time and a half comp time or time and a half overtime. This is for only, um, non-exempt employees. Uh, they are the only ones eligible for the comp time. This is looked at as an added benefit to the employees. It could also realize an overtime savings, uh, in our budget. So there's benefits on both sides. It just gives them an option of extra time off or paid time. Um, any questions? I'd be happy to answer as, as we go along. Uh, we have a nepotism policy. This just spells out exactly, um, who as a family member can be hired, um, or can not be hired more specifically. If you are in a supervisory role, uh, you cannot have a family member that you supervise. Uh, if it's a family member that works in a completely different department and you have no supervisory duties over them, then that would be fine. But this just spells that out for everybody so that there's no misunderstanding. And then the, uh, PTO accrual rate, we are just kind of cleaning, cleaning this up. This was something that was brought up in the audit with things that were done, but he just needed to formalize it in the form of a policy. So this is one of those audit statements that we're just doing some housekeeping. Krista, did I leave anything?
Don't think that.
Thank you, Ms. Born. So I need a motion to adopt the snow removal policy, the compensatory leave policy, the nepotism policy, and the revised PTO annual accrual policy.
So.
Thank you, Ms. Estes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'd just like for the record to show that Personnel Committee did meet and review all these, and we did recommend that we bring up the council.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The passes. Would you like to do a roll call for Ms. Pennell?
For just this one or for all of them? Just this one?
Well.
Oh, for her.
You don't need a roll call for her being present.
Ms. Pennell?
Welcome.
All right, so the final action item for this evening is the approval of the street names for Dayton crossings. Uh, we actually approved the street names at the last meeting. Um, unfortunately, one of those names was used elsewhere in the county, therefore we can't use it here. Um, so we did, uh, go to our resident historian and, uh, get another suggestion. Um, so I'd like to have a motion to replace Rubus Street with Kiefer Street. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. How about replace the, uh, Kiefer Street with Rubus?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Estes. Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Boy, that was a lot harder than it had to be. Uh, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes as well.
Oh.
We have comments.
Falling down on your job.
I'm sorry, I was asking a question.
So it's nice to, we have three, uh, students with us tonight that are going to come up and speak to us about, uh, what they're learning in their physics classes.
It's ten minutes, so I hope y'all practice. We have to be here until eight, then the teacher tell you.
Josh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Jordan, oh, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm right there with you.
So for those of you who don't know, I'm speaking tonight. It's hard to keep it long here, but. Uh, Robert asked me to come on to speak last month and that's who I see that was, that was lying. I couldn't speak. Uh, I want to say a special thank you to Chief Trout and Officer Heaven for their assistance during. Special appreciate Chief Trout for his attitude. It was awesome.
Um, throughout the process, mostly by text message. Scheduled trip to Colorado, his reply. Need, give me a call, whatever. Really appreciate that.
I wanted to come in tonight and.
Say I'm. Interrupt anything. I'll watch, learn how y'all do things. If there's anything to town. Let me know. We'd love to work with you.
In the past, I've run into the.
For water management, that if there was a major fire, that the water affect their budget negatively. If there's anything there, we'll work to our best of our abilities. I'm here to build friendships and partnerships, whatever they may look like. So thank.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah.
We will now move on to staff reports. Mr. Born?
I'm up.
You know, earn your money tonight.
Yep. And I, well, in addition to what's in, in the, there, I, I have a few items I'd like to, to go through. Uh, first of all, for, uh, happy Lundy Gra to all of you. Tomorrow's Mardi Gras, the big day, but today is Lundy Gra.
And where are you from? He is a Louisiana resident.
Usually bring beans, but it's not Mardi Gras. Anyway, uh, the, uh, let's see, I attended my first, uh, Harrisonburg, Rockingham, uh, Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting, and I've also had their orientation completed that as a new board member there. Uh, later this week, I will be attending the, uh, Virginia Local Government Management Association Conference that will be in, in Roanoke. So I'll be attending that, hopefully, some networking with other management officials there in, in local government in around the area. Uh, the budget meetings with our, with the departments for the fiscal year twenty five budget are complete. I think things are going well. Staff is, uh, it's been very, very helpful. This has been the effort filing the budget and the CIP that, uh, will be presented to the Planning Commission and Council. It's a joint meeting. It's, also will be joining Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, February fifteenth, fill that presentation. Uh, so that, I'm looking forward to that. Uh, hopefully, I'm ready, right, Kristin?
Wait, turn you here.
But I'm still not convinced.
See, y'all record that for me. I've got to work. Can y'all like, dude, like how we're doing it in here, like save it for me?
Yes, because it's a council and planning commission and CIP, it will be recorded. All right, planning commission meetings typically are not, but the best, it will be. Um, let's see, all of the interviews that I, I were wanting to do with staff were all complete. Those went very well, very pleased. Uh, you have a great staff, by the way. Wonderful staff. Uh, met with Sally Wolf Garrison of the Rockingham County Commission, uh, this past, uh, month, uh, later, before, the day before the Bucys groundbreaking, actually, which I attended. That will be an amazing facility. Seventy-five thousand square feet, six hundred fifty parking spaces, and a hundred twenty gas pumps. Wow. It's one of their prototype facilities from what I understand is the biggest. That's, that's going to be amazing. That was a very well-attended groundbreaking. The governor was there, uh, the secretary was there, a few other people from around the, the area. Uh, just to go through the schedule, like I mentioned before, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on the fifteenth to, uh, present the, the CIP, that's the capital improvement projects. On, uh, March eleventh, we have the fiscal year twenty five budget work session that will be from ten to three with the council. And then after that, in between March twenty first, sometimes in between there, around the fifteenth, there will be a, uh, adjusted budget and meeting with the finance committee. And then we'll take that, uh, March twenty first will be the CIP bringing that forward to the Planning Commission for a recommendation to council. Then on April eighth, we have the, uh, fiscal year twenty five budget public hearing and approval of the budget amendment that's needed. And then on May thirteenth, we'll have the final budget, uh, for council for your consideration. That leaves some time there if we have to do any kind of adjustments for the June. That's the, the budget.
It's always nice to have a little wiggle room.
Yes. And that's, that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Chief Trout for police report.
Well, Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question? If you have any questions, I'll answer it. Um, I did have one section there in hospital recognition was added in my report because I didn't know about. So, uh, I would present the officer, the trucking officer here, and the investigator here. Um, so this year's unique, the same officer got both awards. On the.
Okay.
Um, so Officer Irman, uh, he was about sixteen months ago, and, uh, he's had twenty-one and a half years of all enforcement. Uh, he's been phenomenal since he's been here. He's a great officer, uh, something his brother officer does, he works hard, does. Above the beyond what he's actually applied. Um, for, for traffic safety expert, he investigated fifteen crashes. Uh, he made eight hundred, over eight hundred traffic stops, uh, as far as the investigator of the year, he had over thirty-five. And since he investigated twelve reportable state police or FBI certificates, uh, with a hundred percent clearance rate. Uh, and of those, uh, nine arrests, all that, uh, so, you know, I'll certainly go beyond, come up.
Here you, here you.
We tried to take you off the year and, uh, let's get her in here.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Speech. Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Want to thank his wife for putting up one of them. She took it apart.
Yeah. Thanks, chief.
Chief, he comes out the cones of the cop. I give her credit. Dedication.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Bowman? Thanks, sir. Mr. Dyjack for economic and community development and finance.
Sure, yeah, uh, great, uh, uh, we met, uh, last week, uh, so again, the positive vibes here in, uh, in Dayton. We're excited for the downtown revitalization grant, and just since we've got some, uh, folks in the audience here too, the, uh, for, uh, TA, you probably, we, we went through a whole list of things that we approved, uh, just a little bit ago. One of those is pretty important was the downtown revitalization grant for consulting services. In other words, our lovely little main street here in, in Dayton, uh, we're actually, we have a team here, actually two of who members are here, Cheryl Line and, and Sam, uh, uh, Lee. So we're excited to, to move that forward, and what that'll do is draft a master plan to help us get our, uh, you know, ideas on paper and be able to make some progress there on downtown, building, you know, doing different projects and helping, you know, uh, stores kind of position themselves, talk about branding, marketing, all that good stuff. So it's a really comprehensive, uh, project and credit to, uh, staff and, uh, you know, Maggie in particular for getting that forward and, uh, great project management team. So we're excited, good things ahead here, and, uh, I think they're excited for that consultant, like, good pedigree. Uh, they were the, uh, at least expensive, the, uh, quickest turnaround and, uh, most responsive, so I think we're looking forward to that. So anyway, that's, uh, so that's all good, and in fact, um, we did meet, uh, and I think Susan, let me know if I'm forgetting anything too, but we had the, uh, we talked a little bit about that. We talked about, we've got a wayfinding signage I know is going to be finished up here shortly with the gateway sign, so thank you, Maggie, for, uh, continuing to work on that. Um, and then the, uh, the other thing, uh, we are, uh, working on is, uh, uh, staff has brought forward some, uh, changes or suggested amendments to the, uh, food truck, uh, and vendor policy and special event policies. Uh, so we're going to plan to have a, a committee meeting, uh, like. Uh, so we're going to plan to have a, a committee meeting, uh, sort of have a public uh, input session uh, in, in early March to talk about that, uh, those potential changes, as well as just give an update on the uh, downtown revitalization uh, policy, uh, plan. So, looking forward to that. So that's a, I think that's community development and uh, finance, I think, uh, covered it. Apparently, that's the budget season, so just roll right in. So for, uh, for everyone's benefit there, for TA students, uh, lo- local government runs on a fiscal year which starts in July, which means basically it's always budgeting. So we're either drafting it, adopting it, or auditing it. So uh, right now, this is the months leading up to that. Uh, and thank you, uh, Ms. Hall, our, our wonderful treasurer, uh, for going through this round, and uh, we'll look forward. Stay tuned.
Thank you, Mr. Dyjek. Uh, Mr. Seward for Infrastructure and Police?
That we have such a good police force and such a good public work, we didn't meet.
Your time's coming, though.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Walls for Parks, Recreation, and Beautification?
We did have a meeting, heck, on January seventh. Talked about a few things. Finished the Greenway trail lights, working on the Silver Lake Nature Trail. And then Jennifer's got to revamp and improve the, the landscaping beds throughout Dayton and then try to create a better maintenance plan for it. And then lastly, I just seen your uh, email. Did you want to say something about that?
If we are ready to.
Go for it.
Yep, um. So some of you may have been wondering why we haven't announced a date for the Muddler yet, and that's because the Muddler is not coming back, but we are replacing it with a brand-new five K event. And we are partnering with VA Momentum on that, and I did just get the green light from them this morning, that it looks like September twenty-first is going to be the date of the new event. So details are still being worked out. We're still trying to come up with a fun theme and a fun name, but that's the direction we're going in with that, so.
Thank you for that. There was a variety of reasons for that.
Yeah.
It was very uh, uh, intrusive to staff, caused a lot of work there. Uh, some of the stuff that we used for the events, we're starting to break down and need to be replaced. And we felt this would be better for the local businesses where maybe there are not, people are not as dirty and they actually spend more time inside our town. So, variety of different reasons. So we figured we, we'd try it and see how it also.
And it would also be, it'll, it'd be the same date as our last um, summer concert series. So we'll have it at that time, and then right after that, then we'll go right into the series, and we'll have uh, some food trucks and stuff like that there as well. So, um, it should be a uh, a, a positive event, and I would think it'd be well-attended. The, the other thing that we talked about that you didn't mention is, now that we have electricity out on the Greenway, and we've talked about this for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. I, I don't want to do it.
No, no, no. I didn't forget about it. Thank you for correcting me on that. But we got the lights up there on the Greenway. We also have electric there where we can actually put some nice Christmas decorations up in that Greenway during that walk.
Yeah, and it'll be open to organizations and businesses and residents if you would like to sponsor a Christmas display over there. If anyone's ever been to Stanton's Holiday of Lights tour at Gypsy Hill Park, it's going to be kind of similar to that. Smaller, but similar.
Thank you, Bob, for that, for it.
And Ms. Mathias for Personnel?
We did meet. Uh, we met on the thirty-first, if my recollection is correct. And we discussed the multiple uh, policy clarifications. And Melody and I were able to get feedback um, and recommendations on some wording and what we thought and to move it forward. So that was really the gist of it, and there will be some more items coming to that, um, are in the works, and being looked at. That was pretty much the gist of it. Everything was covered with the Brian's report and with our vote. You know, I think it covered it. I think we covered. Yes.
Thank you very much. Any other council members have uh, comments? Yeah, as uh, Bradford said, it's nice always to see people out here. Um, you know, you guys require to, to come out for your, uh, for your classes, but it is nice to, uh, to have you come out and kind of see, you know, what it is. Um, you know, we, we go through a lot of things that uh, are up here. Some of the stuff is just procedure stuff that we have to do as far as at the beginning of the year. There's, you know, we have to reassign people to different committees and things like that. So that's just the kind of stuff that just happens. Um, the other things are the action items that are, like we did, you know, renaming the street names at the last month. And then, you know, you think you got it done, and then you find out that you got to change. So, you know, we have a roadmap, but we oftentimes have to go back and readdress that roadmap as we go. So, do you guys have any questions? I, how did I know that was going to be your answer?
This is where he's going to tell you, you're going to speak first.
Oh, I, I already told him. Any unfinished business this evening? Any new business to discuss? I need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned.